I'd like to call the Thursday, August 26th Forest Lake School Board meeting to order. Please rise to the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Member clerk, would you please say your roll call?
Member Corcoran. Member Corcoran is absent. Member Kettle?
Here.
Member Kettle is here. Member Olson?
Here.
Member Olson is here. Member Rayfield?
Here.
And Rayfield is here. Member Tyson?
Here.
Member Tyson is here. Member Peterson?
Here.
Member Peterson is here. And member Luther is here.
With that, I would entertain a motion to approve tonight's meeting agenda.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Alright, agenda's approved. We have scheduled and unscheduled visitors. Member Tyson, do you want to give a report?
Yes, we had 17 people speak tonight on various topics of masking, CRT, so.
Alright, I do have one green card here. Is it Mandolin Eggerman?
Mandolin.
I apologize.
It's Mandolin Eggerman. Hi, I didn't know I was gonna go first. I'm really nervous. I would like to advocate for requiring masks in at least elementary schools. I don't feel like it's my place to ask for middle school or high school because my child is only in elementary school. Thank you for giving me time to speak. It's great to see so many parents here that are obviously interested in their kids' education. It seems to me that no matter which side you're on on the debate, everybody agrees that kids should be in school in person. But is not requiring masks the way to achieve that goal? Lucky for us, other states have already gone back to school not requiring masks. So what has happened? There's tens of thousands of kids that are in quarantine and not in school. There's entire classrooms that are also in quarantine, not in school. Whole schools are shut down. They're not in school. There's kids in hospitals, and all because you can't have them wear masks. Best way to ensure that kids get to stay in school in person is by requiring masks along with following all the other mitigation guidelines. If it is more important to you as a parent that your kid will not wear a mask, the online school option is available to you. Up to this point, I have been proud of this school board and very happy with how you've been handling everything throughout the pandemic. You've been responsive, decisive, communicative, and have made decisions based on the recommended guidelines. Please do not change course now. I believe that all school board decisions should keep the safety of all students as their top priority. Now, I'm not gonna talk about the science, the numbers, or the experts. I would like to appeal to your conscience. This is your watch. Can your conscience handle it if kids get sick on your watch? How will you feel if you choose not to enact a policy that is the bare minimum you could do to attempt to keep kids safe and entire classrooms, or worse, entire schools wind up in quarantine? You had no problem enacting a mask policy last year, and you should not let a small local minority influence your decision for this year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for speaking. With that, we'll move on to positive happenings. Anyone like to go first?
I'll go first. Positive happenings, two things. I had the opportunity yesterday to attend the third annual Forest Lake High School Career Launch Business Summit. It was yesterday. I was tracking my time. But I attended that, and I have to do a shout out to Mark Miran and Molly Bennett for just a great, great program. It was wonderful. So, and there were a lot of people in the room, a lot of businesses represented, so. That, and the second thing is, I was just recently elected to the MSBA as a delegate for Area 15 for the MSBA Delegate Assembly on December 3rd and 4th in St. Louis Park. I'll be representing the district as well as the other schools in District 15 as a delegate.
Member Kettle? Member Tyson?
I went to the ECFE Retirement Celebration, and there was a lot of people there, families bringing their children who had our ECFE teachers. There were five of them that had this celebration. Robin Bigelow, Mary Ann Mountland, the whole crew that we've had in our board packet retire. So it was a fun celebration, and we want to thank them for all that they have bestowed on our community and our littlest learners, so it was really fun to be there tonight, celebrate with them. I just wanted to mention one thing. I bumped into the Forest Lake head football coach, Sam Fararo, over at Fenway Fields where I walk my dogs. He is so excited for the first game on October 1st, I believe, Friday night, October 1st. And he talked about how this is really serendipitous for him too, as he was an adolescent grad. And I talked about sharing with him when I first came on Buildings and Grounds, Larry, our business manager, was trying to get sprinkler heads that had broken and piece them together, and, you know, we were just sharing stories. So, everybody is super excited about our football stadium and the debut game on October 1st. And that concludes my positive happening.
Anything else?
So, thank you. I had the opportunity to go to watch the Stop Out Suicide 5K, see some board member running in it, feeling the thunder. But I was really there to support our marching band through Community Ed. They did a great job. I think every 5K should have a marching band at two and a half miles because people were dancing and running, and it was a really nice portion of the race, and the kids really enjoyed it. And there was some sideline discussion about how we can support the marching band becoming a bigger part of our community again after the rebuilding couple of years. So it was a good turnout, and these are kids that are volunteering to do it. And the second thing is Community Ed Soccer. We've been going to a lot of games and seeing the talent out in the fields and how hard these kids try, from four-year-olds up to sixth graders. It's really great to see how the skills definitely change. We had the Parents vs. Kids Tournament, and parents did well, but the kids had a lot of fun. So they got rained out tonight, but they'll be finishing their last game next week. This is my report.
Member Luther, anyone else?
I had the opportunity to go out west on vacation this last month, which was awesome. I went to Yellowstone and the Black Hills, and then I did have the great pleasure of running in the Stop Out Suicide 5K. I finished it, running the entire 5K, so I consider that accomplishment all on its own.
Perfect.
I did well. Alright, with that, we'll move on to reports. Anybody workshops, conferences?
Something to add? Just want to give MSBA a shout out for their virtual summer seminar. I know we already highlighted that our superintendent and staff reported on our equity to the MSBA group. I just wanted to mention that Katie Packel and Dr. Ken Givens, they gave the report on the Minnesota Safe Learning Survey, and it's by CAREE, which is the Center for Applied Research and Educational Improvement. I always get that wrong. So anyway, it was just wonderful information. They did a spring survey in February. She went over some of the results, and some of the highlights were, you know, listen to teachers, relationships are at the core, structures to put in place to look at mental health. So it was just a great report. One question that came up was, how is this gonna coordinate with the Minnesota Student Survey, which we had that reported out to us before through our Director of Teaching and Learning, or Carol Lattati, who's now retired and given out. So they're gonna try to coordinate that, but it was just a great report, and I always look forward to what their information is when we see them on the docket. The other thing I want to mention is that our virtual advocacy tour is coming up in Northeast Metro, which is Area 14 and 15, and is virtual, and that's Wednesday, September 15th at 7:30. I'm not gonna include my report. Thank you.
And member Tyson, we will move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Massey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For starters, I would like to acknowledge that the death of Forest Lake Police Officer Kurt Kovachin did that because of his connection with the school district, his connection with the officers at work with our school district, his connection with the community. On behalf of the school district and the school board, and of the Forest Lake Police Department, our sincerest condolences for his loss and to the Kovachin family as well. It is a big loss, particularly for our community and our people. Few other topics. You've seen notices and updates from me on our track through the summer, recruiting, training, getting bus drivers in place to start the school year. If you've followed the news, you know Forest Lake has had a leak and difficulty getting bus drivers onboard. John Gray and his team have been working really hard this summer to recruit and train and get bus drivers prepared. With some adjustments to his operation, his report last week was that he thinks he is gonna be in good shape, which is a big development since a couple of weeks ago. Now, that depends on bus drivers for different reasons that at the end of the summer are not able to return, but we're looking better than we were a couple of weeks ago. We don't start the year if we can't get kids on buses and stuff. So it's a critical part of our operation, and they call the bus drivers who are onboard and are committed to driving our kids to school in the safe and friendly fashion. Good news on the enrollment front. We continue to see positive enrollment trends. I'm not gonna get you a number because it moves every day with enrollment and shifts. That's really good early indications for, you know, we're really excited about what we're seeing there. Ranger Academy is our online elementary distance learning program. Just before, me and I checked, and we are at 83 students for Ranger Academy. With, if I have the number correct, six or seven open enrollment from all districts into our Ranger Academy. And we entered a tuition agreement with Chisavala Lakes, provide distance learning for Chisavala Lakes students this stage. Chisavala Lakes area student by enrollment, but they will also enroll with us for the purpose of distance learning. We're excited to be able to provide that action for that district. So we're currently ramping up staff for that purpose, and we're excited to be able to provide that opportunity for our community. This is our new teacher preparation. They are on Overlord. J.P. Jacobson and his team have been leading them throughout the week, getting them prepped with all the logistics, not the least of which is introduction to the classroom, resources, curriculum, teammates, colleagues. It is like drinking from a fire hose, and we're excited for that group. We have the Chamber lunching today. A big shout out to Forest Lake Chamber members and all their partners who put out a lunching for new educators, and really, really positive and welcoming event. Next week, all teachers are back for their link service. Hopefully you have your calendar circled and you are available, hopefully, to join us on Tuesday, August 31st. We'll have our all staff in service. Kettle, for Joe Peterson, giving some outgoing remarks, I'm sure. I'll give a few remarks, and we'll have our keynote speaker until 10:00 or 10:30, and then we'll break out for department meetings. Very busy week for all of our educators as they welcome kids back, all on Tuesday after midnight. September 9th is growing cattle at Waldock Farms, and that starts at 5:30. It is an ongoing event for the last number of years, super positive way to bring the community together, race ones, for the educational foundation of Forest Lake area cattle. So those in the audience, those watching at 9, circle your calendar, head out to Waldock Farms and my legs and join us for this really, really positive event. Member Kettle is on the board, working hard to communicate donation items. Marching band was mentioned just a moment ago. They are our fund a grant this year, so there will be on the spot a lab auction, you know, raising money from those in the to come from your wallet. Sure, actually, tell them on the spot for the fund a grant. We just give a shout out to the marching band. We've had a national award-winning marching band historically in this district. We have been resurrected through the dictatorship of David Tyson, and it's on the rest. And we're gonna fund it through fund a grant and give it a boost to being great. Lastly, if you haven't driven across, could you take a peek from above that Ranger Stadium through that? You'll be amazed and impressed since community has stepped up for supporting this program and the development of our nine-lane track, first track meet issue in 25 years will be held, third field, and we will be holding a community appreciation night when all the councilors and councilors and commissioners come and show up for the march. With that, that concludes my report.
Any questions for Dr. Massey?
I just have a comment. On the cattle event, I don't know if Dr. Massey said it, but the event is free. You can donate, but the event is free, so come on in. There'll be food vendors and other things, so please join us.
Are they even online? Yeah, there's even an app. You don't need to bring your wallet. There's an app.
And member Kettle? Does that will move on to tonight's consent agenda? Do we have a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
Member Chair, I'd like to add a last minute amendment or an adjustment to license personnel protection in this package and add to your approval tonight a full-time position for Ranger Academy due to the increase in enrollment. So, we ask for that amendment to the license person.
So if we could first-
Our organization positions it.
So if we could first have a motion and a second?
A motion to approve the addition, the amendment to section 4.
First, just the consent agenda, then we can do the amendment.
Okay. Amendment for the consent agenda addition?
First of all, I need a motion on the board for the consent agenda first.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Second? And a second?
The amendment for 7.4 classified personnel.
My second.
License, excuse me. License, sorry.
Do we have any discussion on the amendment?
Do you have a person in mind or just a blank check?
It's a permission to hire.
Any further discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of amending the consent agenda signify by aye.
Aye.
Alright, with that, is there any discussion on the amended motion to approve tonight's consent agenda? I guess we don't discuss this consent agenda, so we'll move right on to a vote. All those in favor of approving tonight's consent agenda signify by aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We will move on to action items. Page one, donations. Member Kettle, would you want to read tonight's donations?
I would. Thank you very much, Chair. Tonight, we have a total for the district of $5,128.14 in donations, ironically from two organizations. $4,628.14 from the Forest Lake Dance Team Boosters for payment for dance uniforms for the 2021 and 2022 season, and $500 from the American Legion Auxiliary Unit 225 to provide school supplies for Forestview Elementary and Forest Lake Elementary students. On behalf of the district, we'd like to thank both of those organizations for their donations, and I would move that we accept them and permit their uses designated by the donors.
So second?
Motion and a second. Discussion? I just want to say thank you to the community. It's always so nice to hear these read at every board meeting. The love this community gives to the district is, I'm sure, unmatched by any other community, so. With that, all those in favor of approving tonight's donations signify by aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Move to page two, ratify the 2020-2022 Technology Specialists Association Agreement. Dr. Massey?
Thank you, Minister Chair. I'm happy to report that we have a tentative agreement with our technology specialists for this agreement for the years 2020 through 2022. It is within the school board parameters for negotiating these contracts according to the changes on page four, which strike fair share language. You'll see throughout the changes, and most I think I will highlight those, probably see those throughout. On page 24, you will see consistent with other agreements, a $250 annual increase to district contribution for 13 weeks. On page 32, the salary schedule, those represent a 2% in the first year and 2% in the second year salary scale improvement. With that, we'll give this motion reference to-
Do we have a motion on page two?
So, second?
Motion and a second. Discussion?
Just have one question for the superintendent. How many are in this group?
You always challenge me with that question. Five, six.
Five or six, so.
10.
10.
10. I'm gonna go with 10 because my, our HR director's giving me that great number out now.
Thanks, Dan.
We have 10.
So how many are 12 months and non-12 months? I'm just wondering how that breaks down, given the, some of the allocations in here.
Yeah, I believe one of the positions is 12 months, and the others are 12 weeks.
Okay. Okay. And the supervisor is the Director of Teaching and Learning, right?
Supervisor would be our supervisor of information systems, Mr. Brockman. I'm here with supervision of our Director of Teaching and Learning.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Member Luther?
No, it's not as good as cash, but a sincere thank you because this has been a very tough year for technology, and I think that we figured out a way with all the help from a lot of people to get technology in the classrooms and in the hands of kindergarten, nursery 12 graders, and email, and hotspots, and this has been a really big year, so the best I can say is thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Member clerk, would you please say your roll call?
Member Kettle?
Aye.
Uh, member Olson?
Aye.
Member Rayfield?
Aye.
Member Tyson?
Aye.
Member Peterson?
Aye.
And member Luther votes aye.
With that, move to page three, the COVID-19 case matrix. Dr. Massey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will present a couple of quick slides to review a recommendation and ask for your proposal tonight on page three. The whole set of slides is really nothing new. These come from the mitigation strategies, if you will, that were approved through the resolution that you passed in the DNI that set the school mitigations, including masks being strongly recommended. So if I can just highlight here, the overall district-wide mitigation strategies included, among other, directed in really a family and their choice to getting their students vaccinated when eligible. I understand that's a family choice, but we trust the science there that vaccinations for those eligible is part of our overall mitigation strategies. Practicing, again, good hygiene and respiratory hygiene as well, hand washing and so on. Stay at home when people are sick. That cannot be emphasized strongly enough if we all, when we feel the slightest symptoms, stay home. It's, we've all been a big cavalier as we've grown up. I'll fight through this. This isn't the time to fight through a hole, unless it be COVID or other transmissible viruses or what application. So stay home when sent staff and students. That will help all of us. Choosing to wear a mask is also part of our mitigation strategies. What I would say there is masking, this is not a passive, I recommend masks. We are overtly and actively communicating with our staff to wear masks. We are asking our students to wear masks and families to support that. We know it's a, it's going to be a choice, but that is part of our overall mitigation strategies. We believe that to whatever effect the sciences all admit on their effectiveness, if they're remotely effective, they have some benefit, and therefore, this law they recommend is a very active pepper on our- if not mandate, it is strongly documented. So those are our district's overall mitigation. Our goal, I think, I know board, you share this goal, is to keep our kids in school this year and not have to shut down classrooms and not have to shut down the school. Our kids learn best when they're in the classroom, not on a screen, not at home, not in distance learning, unless they choose to do that for various reasons. We want our kids in the classroom, and that's where they learn best. So as we look at beyond our overall mitigation efforts, how might we respond should there be a positive case in school and in the classroom? So this next piece begins to lay out a very clear, explicit metric, resemble off some other school districts. This metric is very explicit. Now, start on the right-hand side. Sorry for the dark background. Okay, that states that school transmission, if at a school level, we, we actually, we'll pause there, and then we're gonna work one column over. A classroom mitigation strategy. What we are indicating here is if we have one positive case in a classroom, we are going to mask that classroom for 10 days. That's the stated quarantine period by MDAHCCC. So parallel in that quarantine period, now families could choose, my child might not wear a mask, at which point their choice will be to quarantine and lose supportive education in that segment. For one case in the classroom, we will mask that classroom. You might be thinking, that's kind of late to the game. Why would we kind of close the barn door after we have animal leave in the barn? If there is asymptomatic spread because we have a case in that classroom, masking may be effective, and if it allows us to keep those kids in the classroom and that, close that in that classroom, we think that's an important step. Now, once, one column over to the right. If this school reaches 5% or more COVID-related symptoms, identify COVID-related symptoms, we will mask the entire school for 10 days. This is temporary. We're giving ourselves through a moment while of transmission taking place in the school. Again, we can let it go and have it reach 10, 20, whatever percent of the schools out there in other parts of the country based there, that we would be faced with what you see on the bottom, and that's potentially closing down the entire school and going to searing for 10 days or more. We're trying to go over that. The columns to the left, around the yellow and blue, simply indicate that if we reach a 3.4 to 9%, excuse me, a 3 to 4.9% threshold, we're wrapping up our communication with families about the state that we're in and continuing to recommend masking. 1 to 2.9%, again, recommending masks, continuing the communication. If we're at 1% or less, we are, we're likely indicating to families that we're, we're moving to shade, and if families, and we're probably lack enough of our standard, we recommend a mask. So we let this set of metrics drive our decision-making. It's not gonna be a free draw. It's not gonna be a win, and it's not gonna be a knee jerk. This will spell out exactly what we do should we have cases all in the oven and keep kids in school, or we will be breakable. Should we have a spike or a surge, we will be in consultation with MDAH. This would be an excess of, well, an excess of 5% within a particular school, then we may need to be in a school shutdown situation, or directly we can't go over. So this would be an added piece that I would ask for your approval of this piece, considering the metrics that we, the board approved almost a month ago. This would be an additional level of mitigation, if you will, that administration is asking for people to-
Do we have a motion on page three?
So, second?
A motion and a second. Discussion? Member Kettle?
Just want to add a comment, I think, about- Just want to add a comment, I think, about, especially about vaccination. I know there's a lot of hesitancy to doing it. But personally, I have a spouse, I have three adult children, I have three in-laws, and I have one grandchild all of whom have been vaccinated and all of us are doing just great. So I'd highly recommend it if there's any hesitancy in this. That's all I can say. That is.
Loosner?
For masks or against masks? I don't think anybody could argue with the logic of this matrix. It makes a lot of sense. And it really does start with those mitigation talking points that we talked about. Stay at home when you're sick, wash your hands, et cetera. I have a difficult question about the middle school and high school. Is this applying to them?
This would apply to pre-page six. That's our population that's not eligible for vaccination. So we've got all those mitigation strategies that we see. Of course, we're widespread in schools. If we have an outbreak in the middle school or high school, we'll be in consultation with NPH as well. But whether or not that would result in shutdown for a short period of time for these four hours.
Mayor Rayfield?
Yeah, thank you. I mean, for me, I remember last year when we decided to be more open than other schools. And we, you know, as a board, we've tried to do that. We've tried to be a little more open, a little more, you know, a little more open. And the last year, it didn't work out for us. We started seeing cases come. We had a hard time with people being quarantined, filling those spots. And we were able to quickly see that things were not working out. And then we had to go back into remote learning again, right? That was a perfectly reasonable response. We took a little bit of a risk opening the classroom. We saw that it was not working out and we responded. And I think the same is true here. When I, you know, when I think about, you know, the kids wearing masks, I'm okay with the idea of, you know, being a little bit, you know, liberal and not having them wear the mask initially. But if we see problems, I think that that's when we have to be smart. We have to start, you know, ramping up and using those protective methods. I don't, and so I agree with this 100%. I also think that, you know, as I reminded parents back when last year, is that what happens at the home is critically important as well because it's what kids oftentimes bring to the school that gets spread at the school. And so that I think we still, as parents, we have to be smart about, you know, getting vaccinated, taking precautions, just being smart because COVID is not gone. It's, it's still around and I think it's going to be around for a while. And so I just think that, you know, we just have to be smart and take it seriously because, you know, it's what's happening in the homes that's going to determine whether we have masks throughout the schools or not, really. So, that's my comments.
Yeah, well, first I want to thank the community and the parents for all the emails I've received. It really is important to hear your voices, to listen to your opinions. And the feedback just proves to me how much everyone loves their children and wants to do what's best for them. But there's no easy solutions and not one that's going to please everyone. I think fundamentally and collectively, we are responsible for our youngest learners during this time of the virus surge again. But what I like, that this matrix is clear. It's well-defined. It leads us to an understanding of what, you know, what to expect at school when we do get into the red there. And I think like Member Rayfield said, we are going to be conscious of following this matrix. Everybody knows what we're going to be doing. And to do the masks when it's absolutely necessary for our youngest learners for that protection, I think, is a great, great plan. So I will be voting for the matrix. And I really do welcome having this in place because like I said, I think collectively and fundamentally, we need to protect and look after our youngest learners while they're in school. And over the course of the summer, every student I talk to, I live in a cul-de-sac with little ones, high school students. I'm walking my dogs. I'm down at the Summerfield Park. I see people and students all the time. And number one thing they tell me, they want to be in school. They want to be with their teachers. They want to be at activities. They want to sit at lunch and lunch with their friends. So I think this is a great metric. And I think following it is kind of a solution that is a compromise for everyone.
Okay, so I'm the person who disagrees. I don't think this is anywhere near enough. I have read all the same emails. I've talked to a lot of community members who said they don't even want to come into this room because they're worried about closed spaces and people with COVID. My kid had COVID last week, so we're just past our quarantine. So I'm out, but I'm wearing a mask, not for myself, but pretty much for everybody else as we're in closed space. I should have more trust in our community because if everybody wanted to protect all the kids around them, then they would probably do the right thing about staying home. But I know from classrooms last year for my own children, from being in the rooms, that people send their kids sick. And at least last year, there were masks. And not everyone wore them well or with grace, but they, they did help even just being there. Just like walking a little bit is better than just staying on the couch. So there is benefit for just plain old being there. And the, the environment of we're caring for our neighbor. This is not just for ourselves, we're caring for our neighbor. And when I, I have spoken to Dr. Massey, this plan is something of a compromise. It doesn't say we're masking on day one. And I really hope that most kids go to school picking out their outfit, picking out a great mask, being happy on their first day and being encouraged to be safe, to protect their friends and their teachers and their administrators and anybody. We don't know who has cancer. We don't know who's pregnant. We don't know a lot about the people who are sitting next to us or teaching us or serving us foods or driving our buses. So I know some kids have problems with masks and I know lots of kids don't. And endless emails that are very well organized. I applaud the organizational effort to send a lot, a lot of emails that urge, I won't use any negative language. So there was a lot of emails. And there were some emails on the other side, people who were saying, I really feel like we should, or maybe we should for the first quarter, or maybe we should for at least a while, so we see how it's going. Because I think we did really well last year. We started out masked, we did really well. We didn't have a lot of in-class transmissions. And we got the emails, we got information. And it wasn't like name by name, but it was data points. And kids would get it from other places. And then they'd go home sick. And then the class may or may not quarantine, it sort of depended. But most kids didn't get it from their fellow classmates, at least in the K6 where I have a lot of friends and experience. So I think the masks, as part of our strategy, worked. And we can't social distance. We can say that we try, but our schools aren't big enough for six feet or three feet, or even like six inches for some kids. The kids like to be near each other. And somehow, some way, we didn't have massive horrible outbreaks last year, even through the peaks. And I think masks, masks get some credit for that. And this is a strategy. And I hate to say that it's not a good strategy because it's actually a decent strategy. But I think if we started out with everybody pledging personally without a mandate, I will send my kids with masks. I'd feel so much better about this because I would trust everybody's going to send their kids with masks voluntarily. But in the, I don't know, 120 emails, everyone hated masks and said, I will not wear a mask and I will not let my kid wear a mask. Not every single one. But the undercurrent was, I don't want masks. My child won't mask. And so that's a ideology that goes against take care of your neighbor. So this is as good as we're going to get, I think. But I just want to speak up for the, whatever percent of our community feels the same way as me. This is how I feel and this is how I know many people who have emailed also feel. So thank you for my moments.
Thank you, Member Loosner. Any further discussion? With that, Member Clark, would you please say your roll call?
Member Olson?
Aye.
Member Rayfield?
Aye.
Member Tyson?
Aye.
Member Peterson?
Aye.
Member Loosner votes no. Member Porford is absent. Member Kettle?
Aye.
Motion passes. Seeing nothing under new business, review your upcoming calendar dates and I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of adjournment signify by a sign of aye.
Aye.